7:12. Open session, public meetings are subject to being videotaped. Your image and voice may be recorded. Let's see, at 7:15 we have the treasurer, so... We could vote on... April 6th is just me and Tom, so we can't vote on those. July 11th? Wait a minute.
And that's our-
Oh, April 6th.
Yeah.
Okay.
You were on the FinCon then.
Right, and July 11th.
It's last, our last meeting.
I didn't, did I get those? I didn't get them.
I emailed them early this morning. 7:11.
We can-
Maybe I didn't send April 6th. I thought I did. I said, I explained that it was a meeting where you were a FinCon member. It was a joint meeting between the two boards.
Yeah, but I don't think I got those minutes. That's why I didn't think there were any minutes to approve tonight.
Oh. You know what? I've been, sometimes when I've been typing your name, it's been coming up with something else. And I've only just caught that, so...
So, we'll come back to this next meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Both sets?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Because Tom isn't here for the first one.
I'll look, I'll make sure.
No, no, I may not have, I'll go back and check. I think I might not have sent it to you.
Okay.
We have a motor vehicle FY16 refund for $872.82. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we have a motor vehicle FY16 refund for $64.58. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we have a selectman expense for post office mailing for $14.84.
Motion to approve.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
And we will put, we'll put this aside. And go to appointments. 7:15 treasurer appointment with selectmen acting as the personnel committee. Let's see. Do I have anything on this, Mary?
I'm sorry, um, appointments? Oh, treasurer's appointment?
Yes.
Dennis, this is just to talk about whether the personnel policy-
How it works.
Yeah. And so what I gave you is the personnel policy, because there are, there are no notes. It's just June's request for written clarification on whether or not the personnel policy applies to fire department, pay rate setting. You know, I guess the fire department is saying that the belief is that under strong chief, as long as he has a bottom line budget, he can spend on payroll as needed. And June says that's maybe, but I need it in writing, because it would vary from the written policy and the personnel policy on how pay rates are determined, promotions from within, whether you need to post.
Pretty much.
Personnel committee for advertising, posting job descriptions.
Just put everything in the book.
All of it.
Yeah.
Would you like to come up both the-
It's not a complaint, by the way. It's just a clarification.
Right.
Well, I would think that you would go under the personnel policy of the town.
Yes. That's what the rules say. But again, I would like to see that we incorporate it into the personnel policy, so that it's one and the same. And again, the reason for, and again, the board of selectmen on any pay increases, the board of selectmen has to approve. So, anybody within the department that's, I say, "I'm going to pay you $10 an hour," you do have the final approval. The board of selectmen does.
Well, I think what we would want to do is keep it on the pay scale.
And we should look at doing that, too. And we, I think it's, I think it already is.
It currently is.
It already is.
Yeah, right, FY15.
I really don't want to change, I'm not looking to change any of that.
Okay.
I think it was just when it came to any-
Well, the permanent position, I didn't know what to do with a 24-hour. Just hearing the talk up until I found out, it appeared that somebody was going to be paid to inspect hourly, and it's actually a 24-hour position. So, when I asked June, "How did that work with what the chief found out? Does that person qualify for benefits?" And from what we see, the answer is yes. Not only just medical and all that, but also vacation and, you know-
And it's pro, prorated.
But I think maybe this year, that if-
It's a learning curve.
Yes, yes. That if you add anybody additional, you would tell us beforehand, so that we can budget accordingly.
Yeah, because I'll have to do paperwork and go retro to July 1st, so...
Yeah. So, I think there's a lack of communication that went on here.
And I think this is a simple fix right here, if it worked out that some of the stuff didn't have to go through. Because right now, you exempt the school committee and anybody covered by a contract.
Exempt them from compensation?
Right.
So, you're saying that they're exempted from health insurance, from-
They go by their own rules. If it's in the contract that they get.
Right.
I believe the police get four personal days. Is that right, chief? Whereas everyone else, with the exception of, somebody gets two. Oh, building inspector, I believe. So, there's different things we have to keep track of.
But this position's not by contract, so we'll see that it follows the personnel policy.
Two weeks vacation.
Yeah.
Two weeks sick pay.
Do we need to adjust the personnel policy, or no?
No, I don't. I think, I think it's-
I have a concept in writing to go along with this, just to add to it, kind of a, an addendum to it, saying that we wish to follow-
Right.
-personnel policy. Again, except with, except there'd be certain items. When it comes to promotions and hiring and firing and things like that, I think that still needs to stay under their control. And again, the reason that that whole article was there, and I'm sure you all went through it when you went through voting it, is to take the politics out of running the fire department, so that, you know, well, my, my brother's on there, and you're trying to demote him. And as a selectman, I don't want you to do that kind of a thing. And again, my history is, I treat everybody the same. My former department, I kicked off my best friend and selectmen and selectmen's sons, and they didn't participate, or they didn't show up. That's pretty everybody the same. And you don't have any problems.
I mean, I think we're fine with that. I think it's that you affected other budgets that didn't know. So, Chapter 32B-
Right, right.
I think that was the issue, is that it went outside the department when it came time for that position.
And unemployment would be affected if-
Yeah.
Well, technically not, but unemployment doesn't care what the rules are. That's it on the fire question.
Okay. Okay, so-
So, I'll just write something up.
Yeah. Yep.
The second part is a person who, I went back to the book, and they're tracking so that they're working two or three different positions for the town, but they're going to average over 20 hours a week if it continues for a whole year. And I didn't see any exception to that for benefits and vacation and all that. And what we have right now is only employees working 20 hours or more each week, 52 weeks of the year, is all I have, other than under Obamacare. It's the same thing, but it's at 30 hours.
Affordable care, affordable care. He'll be gone, and you'll be stuck saying that for the rest of your life.
Under Trump care.
Well, I think that they're two different departments.
Correct.
Well, then, I think that we need to make sure that both departments realize that they can't work more than a certain number of hours a week.
Yeah, and it's not tracking that way, but that's not for me to say.
Well, I guess it's the personnel committee will write a letter to these two departments.
Okay.
And tell them that the employee cannot, between the two of them, work more than 20 hours a week, so they need to coordinate it between them.
It's kind of three departments in a way.
Yeah, I'm not sure if that one time over at the library counts.
I don't know if it's really limited to that, but okay.
Yeah.
All three departments maybe.
Well, and I think the person who's doing it needs to understand.
They do, but it's gotten out of control, you know? One might not be talking to the other, and it's averaging. It's not just a one-time occurrence.
Okay.
You know, covering for someone who's sick and been taken off a few days. It's been consistent.
Okay.
That's it for personnel.
Okay.
You draft something for, you want to look it over before it gets sent and sign it, or for Chris to sign it?
Yeah, I mean, you can-
Doesn't have to wait till the next meeting, right?
I don't think so, no.
Can you send a draft, like, by email?
Yeah, can you send us a draft, and then we'll-
And then, if you want me to sign it, just let me know.
Okay.
And did you do the glory check?
I'll talk to you about things like that later.
Okay.
Not in a public meeting. Public meeting. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, we're up to appointments. Tammy Money will be appointed to the recreation department. And this has been passed by recreation?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Do I hear a motion on that?
Motion to appoint Tammy Money to recreation.
Okay, I second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You get to sign that. Good evening.
Good evening, how are you?
Good. We're on number D. Okay, the city town of Berlin designates the following representatives to serve as corporate members for Central Mass EMS Corporation. So, we have Roger McManus EMS coordinator and Kevin Clumie, first responder. So, maybe the police chief can tell me what-
I think that's the fire chief.
Oh, well, he's left. What is Central Mass EMS Corp.?
Bruce used to-
I just remember we went through that before last year, where we didn't have, where Bruce was the representative, and it wasn't rescue.
The only tricky part about it, they meet annually, and that could be-
September 1st.
There's another meeting, though, that you're supposed to promise that you'll attend, which is the first Tuesday of May. So, if you have a two-night annual town meeting, it's hard, it was hard for the chief to attend.
Okay.
This is the annual appointment.
Do I hear a motion?
Move to appoint.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. We have the town auditor contract with Clifton Larson Alley for the year ending June 30th, 2016, 2017, and 2018.
We have a recommendation from the auditor?
Accountant.
From the accountant? Yes, the accountant wants us to sign it.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Is this a new auditor, or the same auditor? Same as the one we've had for over a while?
Uh, well, it's the same auditor. I don't know how long we've had the same auditor.
Okay.
A decade or more.
Okay. Um, let's see. They paid $29,000 for last year. It's $29,000 for fiscal year '16, $29,500 for 2017, and $30,000 for 2018.
Okay. I move to approve the contract.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye. I might just suggest that, is it possible to change auditors at some point? Perhaps next year, or?
It's always possible, too.
This is a three-year contract.
Well, okay, then, I mean, talk about it or something.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
Talk to June.
Did you have some concerns with this auditor?
No, I think sometimes it's good to change it up.
Okay.
That's all.
Well, we don't have to sign it, if you want her to go-
I, I don't know. I mean, I read the contract, and it seemed fine. Just seems like sometimes you get into a mode where you're just doing the same thing every year, and-
Cut and paste?
Yeah. So, maybe it'd be a good idea to think about it for the future.
Did I say all in favor? Yes.
Yes, you did.
Okay. Today is the 25th. Well, she's done. Put these out.
This one, can you do?
Are you here for one of these?
Data systems. Got some stuff to get rid of.
We'll do that next, so that you can-
No, that's all right, no.
Oh, no, it's all right. You decided? Yep. All right, data systems.
Okay.
Is that in here? Is there something in here on that? Or is this-
Yeah, the list of-
Ah-ha, got it. Okay, so outdated, non-functioning computer system equipment, wants to dispose of the surplus. Most items will be recycled, but some may contain data, will be destroyed using a professional electronics disposal. So, we have a scan jet scanner, a router, keyboards, surge protectors, laptops.
Old servers in there. There's, there's quite a bit that's been amassed over the years. You know, we've had a lot of discussion about storage, and we've done some clean out in the storage room also, not only in the data room, and come across quite a bit of stuff that, that needed to go, so it's time to purge.
Okay. Any other questions? Do I hear-
Can you come to my house?
Yeah.
I'm having enough trouble with my own, so...
Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve the disposal of the surplus or outdated computer equipment.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Just have a quick little update on data systems. I've gotten some contract proposals from several IT vendors for, for our managed services. I'll probably be coming to you in a few weeks with a contract to decide. I'm just waiting to find out some more information on insurance from some of the vendors and where we may go. I've kind of got a-
Great.
A wide range of proposals. We'll, we'll see where we move to.
Excellent.
And have you done anything about, you got money to do a-
Yes.
Study, right?
So, yeah, I'm kind of holding off until I see where we go with a company that may provide our services, whether we stay with Briley, or we transition to somebody else. Several of the companies I've spoken to, you know, offer those services, or said, "Take us, wait till, if we come in, wait till we evaluate your system, and then we'll see where we go, because you may be better off spending more of that money on equipment versus services." And they had some good input on that.
Good.
So, I don't want to spend all the money just to spend it if we don't, don't need to.
Okay. Great.
Excellent. And just a quick, to flip my hat to police, just to give you a bit of information, I received official notice from Sergeant John Geist that he is going to retire November 1st.
Oh.
So, he's had a great run here, and-
He's headed to Florida?
He'll spend quite some time in Florida, and I'm sure we will still see him around here doing some details.
Yeah, yeah. Wow.
It's good for him. I'm, I'm very happy for him, and I'm glad that he came to this decision on his own, and he's, he's ready. It's good.
Oh, good.
If you wanted to stay for F, there is just one special article, the radio base. I mean, these are not special articles that you didn't want to close out. No one wanted to close out any special articles.
I can stay for a second, that's fine.
All right. So, we have a list of special articles. The first one is cost associated with new fire chief for $15,000. We don't want to close that out.
We do not.
Nope.
Okay. Do not close out.
Don't otherwise.
Okay, we have energy audit. Nope, that's staying. We have handicap, $5,936. Article 5 from 1997.
Evy asked if that remained.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's the 1870 town hall, I think, so.
Do not close. Okay. We have radio base station, $547.65.
Definitely keep that one. We're actually have a, waiting for a Volzland current project right now for some repairs and upgrades, so.
Okay. Matching grant funds, $541.
Keep.
Keep it. We should add money to that, actually.
We used it, yeah.
Curbing and sidewalks, $7,500. That was the center.
Yeah.
Inspector's tablets, $6,000.
Yes. Yes, it's been requested that that remain open.
I thought that's what-
Has not been ordered yet.
Okay. So, they don't have tablets yet?
They do not have tablets yet.
It's been like over a year and a half?
It has.
Two years?
Well, the good news is that you'd have newer technology when you finally pull the trigger on it, and perhaps-
We may have the success of the tablets by the time we pull the trigger on it.
Emergency service study, $1,350.
Emergency service study?
I think that was the study we had done on the fire department and the police department. I don't know that we could do anything with that money at this point, unless-
I suppose not. No, actually, no one chimed in on that, so.
Yeah, we could close that one out.
That's fine.
Okay, we'll close.
There's no study or anything we need to do in terms of-
Well, I mean, we've done that, we've done all, the safety department, we've done dispatch.
Yeah, nothing.
Can't say anything else that we need to do.
Okay.
Town hall elevator and curatorial? No, we don't want to close that. $39,206. And lastly, elevator, 1870 town hall? No. Okay.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Matt, what can, what can we do for you, Matt?
M. Aye.
What? M?
M.
Okay.
M for Matt.
M for Matt.
Yeah. Why don't we-
Well, why don't you come on up, and we'll-
Okay.
Whoops, I put him in the wrong folder.
We were just being proactive. Most people in town are aware we're getting a lot of work done down there, and we're bringing in Title V fill. It's really considered a construction material, not dirt, but Chris said, "Just be sure." We wouldn't want, we wouldn't want DEP there saying, "Dump it," and then somebody from the town saying, "Wait a second, is it really like concrete?" And then I think the, some people from town have chipped in when it came out there.
Highway superintendent said that it was a fixture.
Yeah.
In his opinion, sand is a fixture, but the bylaw itself doesn't really address it head-on.
Title V fill is coming from W.J. Graves, and the pit is in Lancaster. The quantity is between 3,500 and 4,000 yards. And Mike Comely is bringing a sample of the Title V fill to site in about an hour for you to see. I, I don't know.
Well, this in and of itself is below the threshold.
Yes, and I, and they don't even think it's sand, but they just, Chris just wanted to be-
No, I don't-
Pro-positive on so many levels.
No.
Just to make sure nobody comes after the fact and says, "You didn't tell us you were doing something."
Well, it's 10,000 yards, isn't it?
Yeah.
I believe the bylaw.
I think so.
Yeah. I mean, I don't, I think it's below the volume anyway, no matter what it is.
The state will be there looking at it, too. And it's, it's pretty standard fare. All the geotech people that we're dealing with now, we're dealing with a few for different reasons, have said it's always, you know, considered a fixture.
Okay.
So, I'm just kind of almost informing. I don't think I'm asking permission. I think I'm just kind of informing, if everybody's comfortable with that.
I certainly am.
Okay.
I am.
Sounds good.
They'll be there tomorrow morning.
So, so I keep seeing people asking questions. So, you're putting in the waste processing part of it? That's what this-
We are also, just today, we agreed to pre-fund the pit, that the, the sand gravel pit, it's all being dug out. Geotech companies are coming in to do test pits, just to make sure that the reseeds didn't bury anything down there.
Hmm.
And then, we'll move forward from that, but that is all going to be done in the next couple of months. I, I think I shared with you that we couldn't move forward at all with the floodplain scenario, or maybe it was the planning board. We can't, we can't move forward with the financing on the apartments with the floodplain issue at the same time. While they're there, it made financial sense, just to get it all done, it'll please the investors on the apartments, that it's just all been leveled out. It's all literally foundation-ready, just to walk up here and hand Larry Brandt a check. So, they, just today, made the decision to just do it. The geotech people, he'd be here this week, you know, doing, I guess they just take a bulldozer and just start digging through stuff, just to make sure they know what's there. And it's very important to the city, so we're going to put buildings on top of this stuff.
Right.
We need to know, too. We always knew we had to do it, but just today, the decision was made to go forward. We are anticipating closing both the waterworks loan and the hotel loan in the next two and a half weeks. There are simultaneous closings, which always takes a little bit of extra coordination. But we, we truly feel that we've got River, River Bridge in, in pretty much total go mode right now.
Well, it certainly looks like you got a lot of dirt down there.
Oh, dear God. We're just raising it, then we lower it, then we raise it. But, and it's actually a good season, with all the heat, to work with dry dirt is better than working with wet dirt, I'm told, so. The guys are getting there early, and they're staying late.
So, it's your fault, we haven't had any rain?
No, believe me, I want some rain. I got other issues. We just, we just replanted, we put the sleeves back on all our trees.
Oh.
Where you just put the water in, and it drains out slowly for the next-
I saw them doing that the other day.
Well, they were watering the other day, and I said, "Guys, let's not water, let's just buy sleeves and do it all over again."
Right.
Because, you know, each one of those trees is $800, $900. You don't want to lose them. And, yeah. So, we're working hard to maintain the property. We're watering down the dirt every day. We get trucks circling, so that the dust isn't going, A, into our tenants, the daycare center, and then to the rest of the town.
Yeah.
We're watering down as we go, so we think we've got it under control. And if nothing comes up, I won't see you next meeting, but if something comes up, I'm around if anybody has any questions. We'll be doing it.
Okay.
All right. Thank you all.
All right, thank you.
Bye-bye now.
Okay, confirmation of vehicle, real estate, special personal property, and insurance schedules.
Close were sent to all the affected department heads. The fire chief had a couple of changes, recent changes to the fleet, including the purchase of the ladder trough and shedding of an old command car, but otherwise, everything's pretty much the same as it was last year.
Okay. Does anybody want to look at it?
No, the departments have.
The departments have all looked at it?
Mm-hmm.
So. Are you saying that we have to?
Sign off on it.
Sign off on it? Okay, do I hear a motion to?
Confirm the current insurance list of insured premises and property.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can you send me a copy of this? Because for my green communities report, I have to say what.
It's just vehicles.
All vehicles, yeah.
Why don't you send all, all these lists to all the selectmen, just so you have it?
Sure.
You know, when we're bored, we can look at our vehicles. Now I see why Thomas signs the way he does.
I know I got to learn that method.
Okey-dokey. I don't know what this year-end closing, is that part of?
The next thing is H, which is just the execution of the green communities contract.
Okay. So we got our green community grant for a hundred and twenty-three thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars. Sixteen thousand goes to Univent and HVAC cleaning at Burl Memorial. Twenty thousand goes to weatherization at Burl Memorial, and seventeen thousand, four hundred and fifty-nine dollars goes to retro-commissioning at Burl Memorial. And twenty-five thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars goes for analytic software at Burl Memorial. And the municipal building is going to get retro-commissioning for seventeen thousand, and analytic software for twenty-six thousand dollars.
Great. I move to execute the contract.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Goodness. Need a stamp. So is, is this one, shouldn't Dennis sign this?
He did sign, oh, no, he did not.
So this isn't for my signature. This one, which is the.
I'm not sure why he didn't sign that.
Okay.
I don't think there's any harm. He provided the information, though, on it, you know.
But he's the one who's.
Receiving, receiving the funds.
The author, he's deauthorized. I always get this confused. Should he be signing this, or should I?
I think we're, yeah, I think we certainly have the authority to do it.
Okay.
The executive office, so.
I'll sign it.
He threw me a little bit, just bringing it, in the second page is avoided checks, so he gave me everything except for the signature on it, which thought that meant that it was okay to push it back here.
Mm-hmm, I think it's fine.
All right.
This is like taking out a mortgage.
Really?
All right. Think it's done. Okay, we have subsidized housing inventory updates. Requesting new units from Northbrook Senior Limited Partnership. Certificate of completion, which would be forty apartment units, thirty-nine affordable. And Green Acres on Dudley Road, an issuance of building permits for two of the eight affordable ownership units.
Move to. Execute the subsidized housing inventory update.
Second. So do we know what percentage this puts us at?
With all of these?
Mm-hmm.
No, they will give us back a statement after they've recorded these.
Okay.
I don't know off the top, we're at five point seven before this, so.
Forty units isn't going to get us to ten.
That's the threshold, ten?
Yeah.
Yeah.
As soon as I get it, I will share it.
Did you send us an email about this? I just didn't remember one.
I, I may not have.
Okay.
Only because we're nowhere near ten, I, this is more just, for Green Acres, it's the pulling of the building permits. But for Northbrook Village, it's more significant because it's the actual certificate of completion.
Okay.
This is the execution of Form forty-three, transfer of license application from GC Fridays Boston LLC, doing business as TGI Friday Solomon Pond Mall.
You actually approved this earlier, and we sent, actually, after waiting for the attorney for quite some time, we got the information that the ABC had requested back in March. No fault of the attorneys, there's been some bumps along the way of them getting this deal closed. We got the information, I sent it to the ABCC. They said, oh, no, you need to also send a new Form forty-three with this attached information. So I'm finding my way through the ABCC form.
Okay.
Form. So this is just a new one. That information came last week from the attorney, so it's, we're acting pretty quickly to get the form signed and then sent back into the ABCC.
Okay, a transfer of license?
Yeah, they're selling all of their Massachusetts, all of New England, New York, and New Jersey to a company in Florida. So it's a massive deal. I guess none of them have transferred at the local level yet, so it's all being held up. The closing's held up until all these are transferred.
Okay.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the execution of the new Form forty-three.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have a draft DEP letter regarding Lighthouse Environmental ACO request from Maplewood Farm.
I am having Coleman take a quick look through that, particularly after I got the notes that you. And I want to be very sure that. In addition to it not altering the terms of the judicial settlement, that nothing will prevent the town from independently enforcing that judicial settlement, so they're going to give some language on that.
Yes, it sounded like. What did they say in the article? That it was kind of like a, they were just learning how to use the ACOs or?
Well, it's certainly a developing area, and using the ACO as a prospective tool, rather than, you know, a tool meant to fix a problem that already exists. I mean, I knew from the beginning that this, that was, that was new, and I also would say that some of the stuff that you sent me dealt with situations where.
It was after the fact.
Yeah, exactly, and where towns were in the same situation that we were at the beginning with Maplewood, with, you know, without a local bylaw or anything. So I don't think a lot of what was talked about there would actually apply to us in our current situation, but I decided to try to be careful with that.
Okay, so we'll reschedule that for.
Two weeks.
August? Okay, the next one we have is, let's see.
And we don't have any information on this yet, so Keith said that Larry was going to work on fine-tuning, because the original list of OPM duties was drafted before there was a pre-construction meeting. There's since been a pre-construction meeting. I don't know that Larry attended that or not, but after that, they, they had notes on how they wanted to change the list of tasks. Some didn't even belong on this project at all. Others needed to be added. So I guess they're still tweaking that list. In the meantime, I don't, don't believe the building permit is issued for this yet. For the town barn.
I hope not, if we don't have this.
Yeah.
Written up. Okay.
But Keith was surprised that it wasn't here yet, so I haven't connected with Larry about where that's at.
Okay.
So now, when they have meetings, say, for example, with the architect and building committee meetings, do they have to post those? Are they public meetings?
They should be public meetings.
These, just the two of them as co-OPMs, I don't know that that's a quorum of their boards, because there's five on a full town barn study committee. And I think it's just Keith and Tom. I don't think that those are posted meetings.
Okay. Well, she's probably right.
Yeah.
But I did actually send an email to Keith to say, let me know when the next meeting is. If you'd like me to be there, I will try to be there.
I think it would be good to have someone go to some of these meetings.
He said he would.
Mm-hmm.
Didn't know when the next one was, but he would let me know, so I'll keep it posted.
Okay. Town waiver of right of first refusal for a lip unit nine Alden Drive.
It's another housing partnership, nor.
The planning board met and has no interest in purchasing it.
And housing partnership doesn't either.
Well, I did ask for them to weigh in and advise the planning board. And I don't think that actually happened, per se. But the planning board did still say that they would, since they're the holders of the purse string for, I don't know if it's all, but some of the housing. Is it mitigation fund money?
Yeah.
That they advised against it. They advised against the town, and they, you know, recommended waiving the right.
So am I, so they're selling this at one sixteen, but it still stays on our books as affordable housing?
As long as it sells for one sixteen.
Yeah.
But if it doesn't sell within a certain time period, they're then allowed to put it on the market for retail price?
No.
And it goes out of forty? Okay.
It could, however, the DHCD contact said that another way that they sometimes go is just because they don't find an affordable buyer with financing approved for an affordable purchase, they sometimes will proceed to sell it free of this restriction, but with a deed restriction on it that still has a buyer buy it, but with conventional financing at, at a fixed artificially low fixed price in perpetuity. So there's a limit on how much they can, so it's outside the program, but it would be with a deed rider, not through the lip program.
But if it's outside the program, it doesn't go towards our ten percent. Is that true?
No, I think it has a deed restriction that still continues.
Okay.
That I don't know. But there's no guarantee that that would happen, and you can't approve it conditioned. You can't waive your right and have any kind of control over this. It just would go forward if the town waived its right. But she says that that would be a good possible outcome, likelihood-wise, statistically, that it could happen.
Yes, because otherwise, they're, they're.
Overpriced.
Well, not overpriced, but their program is so limited to the number of people who can fit into the slot that they have. Any other comments on this?
Nope.
Okay, do I hear a motion to?
Motion to waive the right of first refusal?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Conservation Commission requests the town retain the right of first refusal. Chapter sixty-one A on the Reese Family Trust River Road West.
That's for a hundred and twenty days, right, from when we received the notice, and the notice was received?
October twenty-ninth.
Okay.
Is when it, when it expires.
Okay.
It's actually on our calendar is when that expires. October twenty-ninth, a Saturday.
Yeah.
July one, we received, it was mailed.
Okay.
So we can wait on this one?
Well, so we, do we need to give them notice that, do we give them any kind of notice?
I can.
Okay. She'll tell them that we're not waiving our right of first refusal.
Not at this point.
Not at this point.
The sendys have the second right, so I've been courtesy copying them just to keep them informed.
Okay, planning board, can a non-resident volunteer in service on the economic development committee?
I think the planning board was going to discuss this amongst themselves, and I don't know the outcome of it, but they did have a request from a non-resident to serve on it.
Well, we've had people who've lived in town and become non-residents stay on committees in the past.
Yeah, I think where this is.
And this is a person who is involved in, in the town because they work at the school.
I mean, if you want to zip a quick note to Coleman about that, I don't think it's a problem, but.
Yeah.
Want to ask for an opinion on that?
Yeah, just a quick.
Yep. Transgender Anti-Discrimination Act. Conversion of single-sex facilities to gender neutral. So this was passed by the state. You're asking if we need a policy regarding bathrooms, changing rooms for town-owned facilities? It's not mandated. I guess I'm asking what exactly this law.
Coleman and Page's advisory was that towns have policies on it, but I suppose that would be if we had some kind of contrary policy that suggested otherwise. Nadine answered that the schools do have a policy that passed their council muster. I guess they've already addressed this and sent on an advisory to parents.
Okay.
But I didn't know if outside of BMS, if there is any kind of town thing that you wanted to look at.
Well, why don't you ask Nadine to send us their policy?
I don't know, did she say policy or did she say practice?
I, you know, that could be.
She, I think that they generally will pass a policy when MASC.
Suggests one.
Recomends one. They may have, but otherwise, they, and she did say something about a letter being written to parents, probably just to let them know that, you know, whichever restroom the child feels.
Comfortable.
More comfortable with.
I would think that would be.
Knowing that that's, that's the way it is. I don't know how you would do that here.
I guess you would have a policy that any employee.
Or visitor?
Or visitor would use the restroom that they're most comfortable using.
Hopefully, they already are.
Or they recommend not having stamped, have them being unisex. In, in the alternative to a policy.
So every bathroom is available for many, but if you have multiple stalls.
Oh, I know, that's just a different lease to address it.
I'd rather just say that a person could use whichever.
Other sieve.
Other sieve.
Yep.
Well, I presume that.
Yes, this is effective October first. I'm reading over Tom's shoulder.
Oh, so it's not effective until October.
Well, can I take this out and read it, and we can talk about it next time?
Yeah.
In the meantime, I'll ask Nadine to copy us on that policy, or is that helpful?
Yeah, sure.
You can keep that? You can keep that. I'll put this back together. Selectmen, notification of filings on behalf of Board of Selectmen by Subbury Valley Trustees.
This may have resolved itself. I guess there's some nickel-and-dime communications that go back and forth between SVT and whomever they're seeking state approval on for matching funding, and the communications will say, "Dear Mr. Andrew," and we were inadvertently copied on, and she says, "Oh, that was a mistake." And I said, "Gee, should the town, as the contract, mass contract applicant, be copied on these things so that you're aware of what's going on too?" She said, "No, I thought that was not going to happen anymore." So, I didn't know if you wanted to be copied on with their doing on behalf of the town under contract, signed by the selectman, or not.
Do you care, Thomas?
Well, I guess I'd like to see an example of what's gone in.
I think there is an example there in the packet.
This one?
If you look further down in that thread, Judy, I think it's, if that was the, what I put in there.
Yeah, I wasn't sure what this agenda item was.
Bathroom page. Oh, yeah, so go back to the bottom of the next page.
I still don't...
So, that was...
I don't see...
Why, it matters?
No, I don't see an example, really, of what...
It's saying, "Dear Mr. Andrew," and it's being sent, not to the selectmen, but it's being sent to Subbury Valley Trustees. So, she's communicating to the state on behalf of that application for a web job, for example?
Yeah, I mean, we should be copied on everything that they are responding to in our name.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Selectmen attendance at the August 2 Department Head Meeting, 10 o'clock, Tuesday, August 2.
I won't be in town that day.
I'm available, but...
I can go. Do you mind?
No.
I know you want more.
You know what, what?
You want more meetings.
No, you're fine.
I'll be here.
I was going to go too, but they specifically wanted one selectman.
Okay.
Is it an open meeting?
If two of you show up, then I'd post it as an open meeting of the selectmen. That's their only concern.
I think you can go, as long as we don't talk.
Well, I believe you're probably going to be away in September, so I'll end up taking that date, if you want me to.
Wiring Inspector Screening Panel applicants. So, she lists the people who applied for letters of appointment. Did everybody look at the...
I looked at the list, I didn't look at the qualifications yet.
Do you want to push...
I don't have an application from Larry. You more tapped him, but the other four, they're in there.
There always seems to be one person who really...
Generally, if you send something after 2 or 3 o'clock on Monday...
A flurry of them came in over the weekend.
Yeah.
Came in over the weekend. For the longest time, it was lingering with Larry and one, and then three came in over the weekend.
Well, so one person has a actual, an actual resume they attach. Well, actually, I saw something for this person, too. I don't know how, how you want to go by, go about deciding who's on there.
Was there a number we had in mind? People?
Yeah, I think there was, I think it's attached there.
Was it five or was it three?
I think it was five.
Okay. Wasn't sure if it was lost.
Oh, you know what? No, I'm thinking of the rail trail, which was five. No, you didn't find this. Norris Mission, per se, like what marching orders you'd give them, what do you want in your inspector, and how many semifinalists do you want them to produce? Those are all questions I typed and added on the top there, Judy, of that yellow post-it, the double post-its there. Yeah, the bottom one, just some issues that you might want to...
How many people applied? Seven?
Seven.
So, do we want them to produce two to three semifinalists? Any particular qualities desired in the candidates, or just copy the screening committee on the job description, any suggested scoring matrix? I almost feel like we should interview the interviewers. See if anybody has any experience interviewing people. Because they're going to need to have someone who's kind of like...
A leader?
The leader, chairman of the committee.
You think it would be Larry?
Maybe.
Maybe. I mean, they need to know what they can and can't ask.
Do we have a policy on this?
Procurement and selection, page four.
You want to have them come in each for five minutes or so, next meeting?
Yeah, I think that would be good.
All four?
Yeah, I would say all four, for when I've taken a quick look at.
Yeah. There you go.
All right.
Five minutes.
I don't have one of these books either.
That's online, isn't it? Personnel policy?
It is online, so the personnel committee, yep.
Okay.
Okey-dokey. So, have them come in next week. Fence viewer application scheduling visit.
Do you want to appoint directly, or would you also want to meet with this person? That person also applied for...
Well, first of all, we never advertised for a fence viewer, did we?
It's been perpetually vacant since...
It's one of the things that are on our...
So, if somebody wants, I think if we're really seriously looking for someone, we should put it out there.
It is out there.
On advertised?
It's been in annual town reports, it's vacant for years since Charlie...
That's not the same as saying the town is looking for a fence viewer, and this is what their duties are. Who knows?
Actually, it doesn't really exist on our website anywhere. We could, I could get the job description, because it's per state law, and put it up there.
Yeah.
As a vacancy, and see what you get for responses.
Yeah.
By the way, the same day that that came in, and I've not heard anyone ever ask about that position or anything of it for the three years I've been here, Sergeant Geis came in and asked, "Who is our fence viewer?" Because I have a neighbor versus neighbor dispute, and I just referred them to the fence viewer.
I don't know if you saw that. Well, I think we should put it, if we're going to hire somebody, we have to, according to the personnel policy, advertise that position.
It's not paid, I don't think, or it's normally paid. I think it's $5 or something very small. You would like it posted?
Yeah.
Okay. And I think there's technically two fence viewing positions. I don't think it's just one. I think you can have up to two. I'll double-check that and post whatever the amount is.
Okay.
You have a job description or anything?
Well, that's per state law.
Yep.
So, you can clip that out.
I can do that, yeah. And you want to hold on that for another meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, you can post it.
Yep. Right.
All right, so we're back to Environment Massachusetts, which is asking us to sign this, which is a letter urging our Massachusetts leaders to help repower Massachusetts with 100% clean energy. And that's pretty much the summary. "We urge you to pledge your support to repower Massachusetts with 100% clean and renewable energy." And I presume this gets sent to our state reps. Does anybody have anything they... They're asking local officials to sign a letter in support of 100% renewable energy. Though communities around Massachusetts have already taken great strides to expand local clean energy production, we're not doing nearly enough to combat the serious effects of climate change.
Well, I think it's an admirable sentiment.
I don't have a problem signing it.
I think it's pretty harmless, actually, I bet it...
Do I hear a motion?
Move to execute the...
Environment Massachusetts?
Environment Massachusetts letter to state lawmakers?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Will it use on that? And the Chief Procurement Officer Advisory, DCAM certification for the...
Ex before that.
Oh, Rail Trail Advisory Committee.
I sent, I think you saw, I sent a note out today, suggesting we could have an initial meeting next Monday or Wednesday. I've heard back from two, saying they could do either one. I was going to wait until sometime tomorrow and see if I heard from anybody else.
Okay.
And try to schedule it by Wednesday, you know? Okay?
Yep. And our Chief Procurement Officer, what would you have an advisory here on, does the need for elevator or general contractors to be DCAM certified?
Last week, the 1870 Town Hall Committee came to visit just to say that their designer had some questions about the procurement law, so trial by fire. I said, "I can help you with whatever you need." And today's question came in from Evvy, and that was, I copied the selectmen, but particularly I was hoping that Tom or Town Counselor, you think, needs to be involved in answering it, but I, I think I'm reading the law correctly, in that this is a project that's greater than $100,000, vertical construction, and that, in any event, the elevator portion of it, which is all she's asking about, is whether a contractor would need to be DCAM certified, and it seems to be yes. There's specific areas of the law, and elevator work, historical work, general construction and demolition are all areas that would call for someone to be DCAM certified, so Austin Designs puts out in its, it's in the Mass Cultural Council application, that they have familiarity with DCAM, so I'm not entirely sure why they're asking the question, but it seems to be plain English right in the IJ's website, that yes, it is required.
Okay.
But I was hoping that maybe you could...
Yeah, I could certainly take a look at it, maybe tomorrow morning, get back to you. So, if I agree with that, or if we feel that, because that's already printed out?
Yeah, you can take that, yeah.
Okay, I'll give you a call on it tomorrow, and if we think there's any doubt, we can always go to Coleman and Nasa, it would seem to be a pretty quick question for them to answer.
And I am checking daily on when they have posted the training.
Mm-hmm.
But they haven't posted it yet for fiscal year '17.
Your training should be online. It's ridiculous that you have to go into Boston.
They do have a couple of satellite locations, I think there's one at UMass Lowell, which I'd go to. Versus Boston, but they don't, it's generally Boston.
I know.
For three full days, by the way, three full consecutive days, so...
And that's only the first part of it.
Yeah, that's only, right, the first part of it. So, with the Highway Barn and with 1870, should probably get speed as quickly as possible, but it's, I can't do it quite yet.
As a former educational trainer, no reason that can't be online.
Definitely.
All right, does anybody have anything else? Nope.
No.
Covered the things I had questions about.
I'll be in and out this week between pneumonia camp.
Is she better?
I don't know, she left me today and she went to camp.
Her daughter has pneumonia.
Had pneumonia. But still was, still opted for camp. I just figured the phone's going to ring, so...
Okay. All right, do I hear a motion to adjourn, then?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.